I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and declare for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Demato?
Here.
Councilmembers De La Ripa?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Julen?
Here.
Yasi?
Here.
We also have our municipal clerk, Brianna Smith, business administrator Michael Sondemeyer, and borough attorney Fred Samra. This is a meeting called to pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on April 1st, 2021. Copies were provided to the local news media and posted continuously in the municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. Per state fire code, I am required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chambers: the main entrance, which you enter through, and a secondary exit to the left of where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk orderly to the exits and exit through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. If there's any questions, please raise your hand. Okay. We do have one matter of discussion in the early executive session, so could I have a motion go into early exec?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we're going to resume our regular meeting at 7:39. We have no non-agenda items, and I'd like the motion to open up for early public comment, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone willing to speak, please, wanting to speak, please come up, state your name and address. Come on up, one.
Yes, I know that, yep, yep.
Yeah, I think he moved to Delaware. Okay, anyone else wanting to come up? Seeing no one, motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reporter committees?
I have one, Economic Development Commission. So, December will be the end of the Taste of Bloomingdale, so that's the stamp program, where you can go, almost like a loyalty program with the local businesses. You get 10 stamps, you can submit it in for a drawing for a $100 gift certificate. This is going to be donated by par dollars law this quarter. We don't think we'll be picking up again next year. We're going to assess how effective it was, talk to some of the businesses, see what they thought of it, before we move on and do anything else. But this will be the last drawing that'll be happening. It's scheduled for December 23rd. We might push it back a week, just depends really on par dollars law. We want to make sure they're there so they can do the drawing and present the card. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Santa Run will be doing this year, December 11th. The schedule will be posted on the website and social media. Health department-wise, everything is this, we have really nothing to report except if people still have interest in getting COVID vaccinations, you can go through Passaic County or your local pharmacies. I do know that our health department is going to be making some plans with the local schools to help the schoolchildren for those who choose to be vaccinated. So, our health department is working with our school system on that as well.
Okay. And just to touch on the Santa Run, we usually do the helicopter landing in Santa at the Bergen School. It was recommended by our health department not to do that because usually we get about 500 people that day, and to have 500 people inside the Bergen School, we didn't think it was safe to do that. So now the fire department's going to do their annual Santa Run and bring Santa to through the streets. And like Dawn said, there'll be a definite schedule for that, giving out candy cane and doing what they normally do, so that'll, that'll be for Christmas this year. Rich?
Yes, I attended the first, let me know about schools as having five-year strategic planning initiative, rather than the board coming up with their own initiatives and stuff like that. They sort of found it open to the public. Like, and I had the opportunity last night to participate in the first one. Superintendent presented a bunch of, you know, sort of, we call them like a state of the public schools, you know, where they currently are, where they're hoping to go in this year. But the idea is to come up with, you know, a strategic view based on community input of where they want to be over the next five years. I thought it was very good. They have another meeting set for Monday, December 6th, and their third meeting is Monday, January 10th. And that, of course, will also be open to the public and be able to, you know, sort of chime in on what you think the school system should be looking forward to over the next five years.
Okay. Anybody else?
No.
You're good.
Mike?
Yeah, a couple of things, Mayor. Last couple of weeks interviewing a bunch of people for a bunch of positions here in town. Construction will be interviewing eight candidates. We narrowed that down to one, and we're looking to hire her tonight. It's on the, I think it's in the consent agenda. Her name is Jennifer Fulton, to be the technical assistant to the construction office. And we're looking to have her start next Monday, the 29th, being that the person that was there has left, her last day was last Friday. The DPW was interviewing for four positions, they had 19 candidates. They brought back six today for second interviews with myself. Narrowed that down to the final four, so I'm looking to give a letter of intent, because I couldn't get the resolutions done for tonight's meeting. So I'll do a letter of intent to hire those four, bring them, have them start on January 3rd, all four, and so at the next meeting, there'll be a resolution to hire all four of those candidates in front of the council. And then the next couple of weeks, we will start interviewing for the court clerk position. We have six candidates. I'll talk to the judge, and there's a particular group that has to get together in order to interview. It's not just myself and him, it's certain people in the county that have to be involved, as well as some members from up here. I know Councilwoman Hudson volunteered to sit on that committee as well, so we'll take care on that and work that process. And hopefully by the 28th, we have somebody with a resolution ready to go, so they can start January 1st, when our court clerk leaves.
Okay.
That's pretty much it.
Yeah, just a note on the hirings, that we had a lot of people retire this year, so all these hirings that we're bringing onboard is from the retirements. So we're not really, we're not adding headcount. Okay, just to clear that up.
And that's including the technical assistant to the building?
Yes, well, yes. We wish Maureen the best, she retired.
I didn't realize that was the title, technical assistant.
Yeah, technical, yeah. Okay. Bree, anything?
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Fred?
The only, the only thing I would mention is, they're saying elected officials seminar that's available online now. We've worked on this, but any elected official who registers and takes the seminar, you receive a $250 credit from your joint insurance fund premium for next year. So I can send the link over to Bree, and she can distribute it to members of the governing body, as well as newly elected officials as well.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
Is that just elected officials?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys.
I figured Mike would want to take it four or five times if he knew he was going to get $250, but only one, and it's for the elected officials, but it's a good program this year, thanks.
Okay. Good. Anybody else? All right, just for me, just, it was honored this past Sunday to honor Nancy Dale up on Knowles and Reeves to overlay that as a Nancy Dale lane. We had a great turnout for that. Mr. Dale, Lenny was there, and it was, it kind of amazed me that there was people that, because I grew up up there, that no longer live here, came back to attend this. It's, you know, people that, the Kelly girls, Patty and Jackie, Vinnie Cassini who still lives up there, his wife are there, Linda was there, but there were several people that I haven't seen in years that attended this. It was really nice, it just does the impact she had on the, on the community, so, which is, which is great. Okay. Item nine, resolution number 2021-11.12, consent and genic, have a motion to pass to consent and agenda.
No more.
Questions?
Did I, questions?
Any questions?
Okay. Any question regarding the agenda before we vote? No? Okay, roll call.
Demato?
Yes.
De La Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes. I'll just reuse from item D.
From which one?
D. Item D. Okay. Pending items, second and final reading of public hearing, ordinance number 2025-2021, amending chapter 92 zoning, BCD, amending subsection N. Public notice statement, please.
This ordinance was posted in the Herald, published in the Herald, copies remain available to the public, so that motion may be made, but it will be read by title.
Okay. Have a motion to read by title. Someone? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending chapter 92 zoning, section 92-55.2, Bloomingdale Center District, Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
Kevin, motion to open up public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone willing to comment, please come up, state your name and address. Seeing no one, motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adoption?
Can we, I thought we're not having discussion on this?
We can, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah. This is something that, I love the idea that we're trying to, you know, have some consistency with our downtown, but some of these things are just, in my opinion, I think, I think it's a good start, but I think we could improve on them. I'm specifically in the color area, for me. If you go to number five, the building facade color guidelines, the color scheme should be compatible with adjacent buildings. That alone, to me, is not something that I would agree with at all. I think if you have a building downtown...
That's not...
Which ordinance are we going, because this, this said 25.2...
We adopted, we adopted that order last time, this, this, we, we just the, if I'm not correct, my mistake, just the prohibited finished usage. We had prohibited, we had published, everything was prior, we adopted it.
When did we adopt that, because that was, that was...
Two meetings ago?
Two meetings ago.
It's actually, I think we did it the night of the...
No, because I asked if we could have discussion on that, and I was told no.
No, that was at the introduction.
Okay.
Then we voted on it, we voted on it, I believe, the night we swore to new officers.
Yeah, that's right.
We did it. The only thing that's on this ordinance now is it's prohibited finished.
I didn't think we discussed that at the last meeting. Okay, well...
I mean, we can go back, Bree can pull it, but it's, we did it at the swearing in of the new officers.
Well, I think that this needs some reevaluation regardless.
And you voted yes for it.
I have nothing, I, I, I thought we discussed it the last one, when I asked about it, and we said we couldn't discuss it at the time, so...
That was at the introduction?
Yeah, I remember.
Right.
So, but I still think this needs to be revisited, because this is not something that I think is a good idea.
Okay. Maybe you can meet with the ordinance review committee and...
We've, we've discussed it.
Okay. We could always amend, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, am I still allowed to discuss it then, so everybody understands where I'm coming from?
Sure.
So, specifically with the color schemes, it says the color scheme should be compatible with adjacent buildings. I, I don't like that idea, because I think if you have a building that is there already, that the color scheme is poor, then you're telling someone that they should paint their building similar to the color that's next to it, and that color's already a poor color, that to me makes absolutely no sense. This also talks about black and white colors, you know, if you go back into small towns, any small town that is a beautiful town, town area, some of the most beautiful buildings from, you know, 20, 20 years to 200 years are white, simple white colors. Why would we, why would we say no to that in our downtown? Makes absolutely no sense to me. Black is another one, you know, if you go in downtown Paquonic, they've done some buildings down there that are absolutely beautiful, and they've used mostly black, and they're gorgeous. I just think, I feel like we could do a better job, and especially, we've left open the scheme of saying a palette of earth tone colors, to me, is just not something that, to me, is a good color scheme. The problem is, is that when you say earth tone colors, that could, and you Google earth tone colors, it could be all different kinds of colors. I think it's, we're leaving it too open.
I thought that was the intent of it, to give people more of a choice, but keep it uniform and consistent.
Um, I understand that, but...
Earth tone, you're right, earth tone colors can be...
It's...
An off-white is an earth tone color.
Exactly.
So there's your white answer.
Yeah, and, and orange could be an earth tone color. I just feel like we're leaving this too open for people, and it's, I don't think it's really the look that, in my opinion, I would want to see the entire downtown eventually look like, you know? I just feel like this, this needs to be a little tighter and more consistent.
We can look at it again, I mean, like I said, we have, we have to amend something that everybody agrees on, and visit, sit down. One of my goals for next year is to, and as we have, we have liaisons to, to other committees, is have more input with the ordinance review, because those guys, they work very hard on all of this. So if we have issues that you're talking about, we should be discussing it then, and then you can come back and report to the council, like another committee, saying this is what we talked about, this is where the direction we're going, what do you think? And then, instead of the ordinance coming to us at this point and having this discussion, we should have that discussion before we bring it to introduction. Like every other...
And I, I understand where the ordinance review, review committee really felt that this was a start, Bill, that this was, that, you know, it was a starting, it was, it was something that, let's, let's start with it, but, yeah. But I still think sooner than later, this needs to be amended, and we need to get that, because if somebody puts a building up right now and puts their building right next to a building that, in my opinion, is pretty ugly, then we're saying in this that it should be similar to the color adjacent to that one, it's not, I don't think it's such a great idea.
Okay.
The rest of it was great.
Okay.
Sorry, Bill, but the rest of it was awesome.
Okay, Kevin, a motion for adoption? So moved?
Second.
Roll call.
De La Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Uh, just to be clear, we're, we're talking about the prohibited finished materials here, correct? And then we may go back in time and revisit the appropriate color schemes and then...
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Devia?
Yes. Okay. Item B, second and final reading of public hearing, ordinance number 26-2021, amending chapter seven, traffic stop sign at Elizabeth Street. Public notice statement, please.
This ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald, copies will be available to the public, so that motion may be read by title.
Have a motion to read by title.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending chapter seven, traffic, section seven dash thirty, stop intersections of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
Okay, motion over public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, motion to close?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Just a comment here, this is a brilliant idea. As someone who lives in that neighborhood, who walks a dog up and down that hill, and drives a car up and down that hill, and has two young boys that ride their scooters way too fast, up and down that hill, this is smart. This is really smart.
Okay.
Because that's a sort of a guessing game, if you're driving up or, up or down, so well done here.
Motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Demato?
Yes.
De La Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Okay. New business, introduction of bond ordinance number 27-2021, amending bond ordinance increase section 20 cost. Have a motion to read by title.
Someone?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Final ordinance amended bond ordinance number 10-2017, finally adopted on April 4th of 2017, as further amended by bond ordinance number 27-2018, finally adopted on November 1st, 2018, by the Borough Council of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to increase the total NJSA 40A semicolon 2-20 plus by $60,925.61 from $190,000 to $250,925.
Okay. Item B.
Um, July meeting.
Yes. The December meeting is going to be moved from December 21st to December 28th, 2021. So this will be...
So the second and final...
Second and final will be on the 28th.
Bond ordinance will be December 28th at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Item B, introduction of ordinance number 28-2021, amending chapter 92 zoning, rezoning block 3035 lot 33. Have a motion to read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, rezoning block 3035 lot 33, and amending chapter 92 zoning of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale. This ordinance will go to the planning board, and then second and final, an adoption will be scheduled for December 28th at 7:00 p.m.
Item C, introduction of ordinance number 21, 29-2021, amending chapter 19 solid waste. Motion to read by title.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending chapter 19 solid waste management of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale, second and final will be December 28th at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Item E, introduction of ordinance number 31-2021, authorizing the sale of portion of block 5105. Did I skip one?
Number 30. Amending chapter 2-80.
Oh, the bulk, I checked it off, that's why, all right, excuse me. D, introduction of ordinance number 30-2021, amending chapter 2-80, fees on bulk items. Motion to read by title.
So moved.
I was ahead of myself.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending chapter 2, administration, article 8, policies and procedures, section 2-80, fees charged for municipal services of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale, second and final will also be December 28th at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Item E, introduction of ordinance number 31-2021, authorizing the sale of a portion of block 5105 lot 14.01, and a portion of block 5105 lot 14 dot 02 pursuant to the NJSA 40A 12-13 ET AL. And I don't know what that all means, but, have a motion to read by title.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, to authorize the sale of a portion of block 5105 lot 14.01, and portion of block 5105 lot 14.02 pursuant to NJSA 40A semicolon 12-13. A second and final will be December 28th at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Item F, adoption of resolution number 2021-11-18, payment of the bills. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Demato?
Yes, with the vendor 01436.
De La Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Okay. Item G, adoption of resolution number 2021-11-19, hiring a full-time technical assistant to the construction official. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Julen?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Demato?
Yes.
De La Ripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion to open up, leave public comment.
So moved.
Hold a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak, please come up, state your name and address.
How come the introduction of ordinance number 31, 2021, is not on the website, outside ordinance? All the other ones are there, but that's not?
I don't know.
I, that one's not prepared. So how did you introduce something that's not prepared? That's interesting.
Which, which one? That's by title it's been introduced. So it's still going to be published, and has to be put in the paper, and there'll be a public hearing.
Why are all the other ones up there and that one's not?
Because we're, we're really trying to get all the details in order, but the salient information, it's a portion of the block and lots, there's already a sale, that's, well, we have a donation agreement from Tilcon, and this would be to authorize, not a contract, just to authorize the sale of public land under the redevelopment law. So that, that's what the ordinance would say.
So this is not saying, this is not selling it at this point?
It would authorize the sale, there'd be a separate resolution for a contract, public land. It's a sale of, of that public land, that's, that's really what it would be under the redevelopment law.
So this is not being sold at this point, it's just authorizing it to be sold?
Yes.
Okay, also, the ordinance for the bond ordinance, they increased by $60,000, why does that increase?
Our engineering costs, costs have increased for this year, so we had to move money, it's not new money. We had to move money from another section to here, so we have enough money to pay our engineering cost.
It's not new money, you're, you're, you're amending the bond ordinance?
Right, but it's...
So you got more money?
Can you explain that, Mike? Because it's not increasing the debt, we just moved it from, I was told today, they're moving it from exactly...
To the section 20 of the ordinance. The money's there, we just took it from one section and put it in section 20 to cover the engineering bills.
Where are we taking it from?
I'm not sure, top of my head.
Well, we can let you know, we can ask, ask finance tomorrow.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
In executive session, we're not coming after doing anything, right? We're just being, there's no reason why, if you've shared service, have you...
So there's no action being taken?
Okay. We do have one matter in...
The question is...
Yeah.
The question is...
Okay, can I have a motion... Okay, can I have a motion to close late public comment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we do have one matter of personnel, um, or actually, it's negotiations, right?
If it's not personnel, it's going to be contract...
Contract negotiations, and in late executive session, there will be no action taken. So, can I have a motion to adjourn and go into...
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to go into executive session.